What I heard from Bobby was that we're really not interested in touching this until we get some definition or direction regarding the HID and the RID money.
I agree.
Okay. Bobby, thumbs up. Jeff?
I'm on defense about it. You know, I take Chip's comments to heart that, you know, Bo has spent a lot of time and the police has spent a lot of time, but especially Bo and Marnie. And, you know, we receive, I'm sure everybody on the council receives periodic comments about the slowness of planning, you know, the amount of time it takes to get plans back. Like, everything inside planning is just slow these days. And, you know, I do think that, you know, my inclination, not a strong inclination, but my inclination would be to try to recoup some of the money that we spend on code enforcement back to the people that are requiring the code enforcement.
So would there be consensus to go ahead and get a quantification of what it would cost to hire an outside contractor for code enforcement and then come back after we have a discussion about that in public? And maybe bring it back to an ad hoc, which is going to be a standing committee for some discussion there?
I would like to see a standing committee.
Actually, Bobby, Carrie had her hand up. I'm sorry.
So, um, I, it's really disappointing that the restaurants, we are trying to help the restaurants out and they're taking advantage. So, um, it's really disappointing that we have to spend so much time policing them. It's very clear, we've made it very clear what the rules are. So there really shouldn't be that much policing going on, but unfortunately, a few restaurants are pushing the envelope. So I think eventually, if we're going to keep outdoor dining, we are going to have to charge for the parking spaces. In terms of the policing, I would like to look into having the restaurant improvement district assess themselves by changing their, because they're the ones that are causing the problem here. They're the ones that are causing the, um, uh, staff time in policing them. So we, I think we'd like to go back to the restaurant improvement district and ask them to change their, um, uh, codes or form so that they can maybe put some money toward enforcement.
Good, thank you. Jeff, to that point?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. To that point, yes, I agree with Councilmember Tyce. I'm a little bit loathe to, I know Bobby spoke about sort of rating some of the money that we either allocated in our budget to send to the HID, but I'm not particularly in favor of, you know, we made a budgetary decision to allocate money to the HID and to the marketing program, and that's okay. I'm not, I'm not particularly keen on removing that money to fund this other effort. I don't think the HID or most of the members of the HID are responsible for the problems that I agree with that Councilmember Tyce brought up. I do think, I do agree with her comments.
And I would just say that, you know, as this has been brought up at the ad hoc, there has been some responsible members of the industry saying, wait, maybe we should be participating in the funding of this in some way. So I think that's a discussion we can have in a broader forum. But Karen, did you have any thoughts?
Well, I think what Carrie said is very important, and that the people who are causing all the problems are few and far between, I believe. I think the majority of people are doing the right thing, it appears, but the ones that continually are causing the problems, maybe just talking and admonishing them does not work. And at some point, a loud message gets sent if you revoke someone's permit if they are a repeat offender. And I know that sounds tough, but if it's causing our staff to spend so much time playing welcome mole all the time, and it also exposes our, our police department to being brought into enforcing things that, you know, probably are not where they should be most of the time, and also our fire department, we need people to get with the program, understand the rules, and then self-police themselves. And if they can't do that, maybe we have to consider after so many strikes that their permit is revoked. Thank you.
I'd agree. There should be consequences for bad behavior. I agree. All right. So Chip, my thought on this is that obviously we've got a funding shortfall and we've got an exorbitant amount of time utilized by staff. Perhaps we should quantify those hours, put a cost associated with it, get an outside contractor estimate here, then bring it back to the ad hoc or the standing committee and say, how do you guys want to fund this? What are we going to do here? Make this a sustainable program for you guys, but also something that has teeth in it that has an enforcement component that we can stand behind and not keep draining staff from the planning and building department, which is my, my big issue is that we're utilizing staff from jobs that they shouldn't be doing, especially public safety. I mean, the chief's testimony tonight was incredibly compelling, the number of, you know, issues that he's chasing that aren't necessarily your standard law enforcement issues. You didn't go to the police academy to go ahead and be handing out tickets for heater violations. So.
Why are we talking about heater violations when we, we have?
Excuse me, excuse me, you don't have any speaking opportunities right now. The public comment period is closed. All right. Marnie, would you make sure that is muted?
I am on it. I did take care of that.
Thank you. All right.
So I understand the direction, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. If I, if I have one more, 30 seconds, Mr. Mayor. The question was asked, was posed by, by one of the council members about whether the citations or the strikes were more effective. And so I queried the planning and building department and the police department, and they argued that the three-strike methodology, which again, was the, um, the enforcement mechanism that we built in to, into the permitting process for the outdoor seating was more effective, i.e., you strike out three times, you get your stuff out of the public right away, get your stuff off the street, and that's it for you. The citations started $100. Mr. Peer and the planners developed the administrative citation process within the last year, and it doubles and it can go up to $1,000, but that, that does not appear to be punitive enough for some of the, some of the folks to follow the rules. So that's the answer I received again from Chief Tomasi and Ms. Waffle, that the three-strike methodology is.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, Chip, the $1,000 fines are not punitive enough?
That appears to be the case, sir, yes.
So is your recommendation that one of the considerations we'd be looking at is raising those punitive costs?
Um, we could, sir. We could look at that through a fee resolution, which established the, those administrative citations, or again, just focus on the three-strike methodology. And as Ms. Waffle can report, we have about a dozen restaurants that have, have one or two strikes, but no one has gone to the third strike. And as Chief Tomasi, and I'll reinforce this, are, we're not trying to be punitive. We're trying to, you know, get voluntary compliance, because again, these are safety issues, these are character issues that impact our village, and that's the basis for our, for enforcement action.
Jeff, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. I know Brian's here, so if I speak his name, he'll show up again. I thought, you know, somewhere in the back of my mind, you know, these fees, these fines that we charge, they're not fines, they're not fees, they're fines. And I think somewhere in the back of my mind, I'm remembering something that says the limit on the amount of fine we're allowed to charge through this administrative process is $1,000. Is that, is that, do you, do you know anything about that, Brian? Like, could we, could we, you know, the mayor just talked about raising the fee schedule from, you know, $100 to $1,000 to presumably $100 to $2,000. Can we legally do that? Or, yeah?
Well, I'd have to look into it. I know that your current schedule of fines provides for increasing the numbers of fines based on the, the number of offenses. I, and I'm not recalling from memory, but I, I thought it was like $100 for the first one, and I don't know, I don't want to guess. And it escalated to an intermediate amount and then to a higher amount. For, I think the highest amount was for the third and any subsequent violations. I don't remember any cap on the total amount of the fines. So for example, if someone had 10 violations, I think they would still be subject to being fined at the third or more violation stage.
Yeah, I was speaking about like a state law that, that limited the amount of money we could just fine someone for basically the equivalent of a traffic, parking, a traffic violation. Like, is that limit $1,000 or something? How did we come up with the $1,000 upper limit?
I'd have to look, but I don't recall the code with the $1,000 limit, but I, you know, if you want, I'll look it up.
But Jeff, I do understand your point. So when I was on the Board of Supervisors, I get complaints all the time about people illegally parking down on Carmel Point. Well, I put up some signs, no parking, the fine was $25. They'd rather pay the fine and be able to park there all day and pay one parking ticket for 25 bucks. So to go ahead and raise that cost, this incredibly procedural process at the state level, where I thought, okay, if we got, if I find you $100, you're probably going to pay attention. It's sort of, sort of the magnitude of the consequence, you know, what is it going to be to get your attention? And I think if you can go ahead and, and I'd rather not put somebody out of business and wake them up financially and put a burden on them where they said, all right, this is kind of heavy lift here, I can't really afford to be bad behavior. You know?
Yeah. I think it's interesting, Dave, that, you know, Chip just told us that the restaurants are averse, you know, not at all averse to paying $1,000 fines, and yet we're getting some pushback on, you know, the fees, the fees to enforce the, it's just, it's strange to me.
Well, it's a, it's a challenge for sure. All right, Chip, have you got direction on this item? All right, love.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Let's see if we can move through the rest of these. There are seating coveries for the public right away. I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. I mean, to me, it's a public safety issue. I mean, it's what the fire department determines is safe, is for public safety. I mean, obviously, we, and then right now, the issue's moot anyway for the next month, but I just don't see any other determining authority other than the fire department to go ahead and say, this is what's allowable, this is what's not allowable. Karen?
Yes, the Monterey Planning and the city administrator and Chief Panholzer was there and Seychelle was there. They did a webinar for the Wharf restaurateurs that I attended, and it was well done. They spelled out the rules, they answered questions, and it was an opportunity for those Wharf businesses to all be as a part of that webinar and get the rules. And I think that might be something we might want to look into here is having Chief Panholzer and Seychelle and Tomasi and the planning department do one of these webinars, because I don't, you know, with things changing as they are, it can disseminate the information all in one place, and it's recorded so people can watch it later if they couldn't watch it during the time. I think it probably would be a positive thing so that when things do change as far as any rules or regulations, it's all done through an organized situation.
Excellent suggestion. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with Karen's comments, and I would add one thing, Dave, since you mentioned public safety, I forgot to say this before. You know, we talk, Karen was talking about the fire department inspecting these covers for fire safety. Chip, I think it would be great if the chief of police went around and made sure that the barriers can be seen, that the various parkas we have can be seen at night. I sent you, you know, I know some of them, one of them, you know, some of the paint colors are dark and they can't be seen at night, and, and it would be great if, you know, one of the police officers or something could go around and, and make sure that these things are, you know, people are at least marginally protected with reflective tape or whatever it is for nighttime dining.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll continue to work, to do that.
Karen?
I agree. I did, the last couple nights I've driven around at night just to see what it looks like, and many of them you cannot see until the last minute, and that reflective tape would be very helpful. I also think it would help us get rid of some of the orange cones that have started showing up around town, which I think are kind of tacky, and the reflective tape would do the job in a much more attractive way. Some people have done a good job of marking the corners of their parklets, but it's very dark downtown, and particularly after the lights and so on go off, and don't want anybody to run into any of these things, even if they're empty, we don't want them to be destroyed or cause damage to anyone, particularly if their, people are seated in them. That also brings up the fact that many of them, while they appear attractive, they're really very flimsy. They might just be little shelves with some covering on them, they don't have any weight or heft, there's, you know, some lattice work just propped up against barrels and so on. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but some people have done a really good job of making their parklet very sturdy, very safe, and I think that the ones that aren't should be re-inspected and asked to bring it up to some safety standards.
We can, we can do that, council. We can do that. Thank you.
Brian, were you trying to say something?
Oops, go ahead.
Yes, I have, I looked it up for Councilmember Barron's question. It's in your municipal code, it's section 1.16.010. You can cite for violations as an infraction. The first violation is 100, the second infraction is 200, and as I expected, the third and subsequent infractions within one year or more are, is a fine totaling $500 for each violation. And then on the $1,000, I did find that also, you can either cite your violation as an infraction, or you can cite it as a misdemeanor, and your code provides that if it's cited as a misdemeanor, then the fine does not exceed $1,000 and/or imprisonment for a term not exceeding six months.
That might get somebody's attention. All right, Chip, you got direction on this one? All right, so now the next question is 16 seats or less or more if plexiglass is involved in separations? Any thoughts on this or direction, or do you want to let this hang until we get definition from the health department? Bobby?
Well, part of these guidelines, I think that, you know, I came up with, and that 16 seat, I think Marnie and I came up with that, and it was pretty random. We just thought that that seemed to be the right number. However, I think that some of the restaurateurs were able to prove that they could establish the distance with the plexiglass. And so I think that number should be, could be addressed. I would love to see, you know, some help from the county on that one with, with what we could provide, what we could allow in those parklets. Could, you know, it seemed to me, I don't think anybody has just 16 at this point. I don't think anybody's followed that rule. So it would be interesting to maybe, well, I'd like to hear your, all of your opinions, and, and maybe if we could get the county involved with helping us on this.
I'd agree with Bobby. Actually, if we can get the county to give us some more definitive direction, they're going to use, they're using plexiglass separations in banks, they're using it in restaurants, in, excuse me, in grocery stores, and they're going to actually propose to use them in the inside of restaurants. I don't know what the difference is on the inside versus the outside. So perhaps, Chip, we could pose that to Mary Adams on Thursday as something we'd like some clarification on. It really is a health and safety issue. It's not really in the purview of the local council to go ahead and decide what the parameters are for separation. We're being asked to get a step out of our comfort zone. Karen?
Yes, I think one of the questions would be, how do the plexiglass and the weather proofing affect ventilation? Because ventilation is key in the outdoor dining being more helpful. And when we do go back indoors, ventilation systems will be extremely important so that the proper ventilation inside a business is, is up to code. And so we have some time probably to start exploring and helping our restaurants go back inside safely if we start to have that conversation about what is the proper ventilation for some of these older buildings. But the one question that I have with plexiglass is, are you creating an outdoor room, an indoor room outdoors? And if you're creating an indoor room outdoors, it's not much safer than being indoors, and you have to, evidently, I've been doing a little reading, some of these igloos that have popped up in cities and these little outdoor rooms, they're required to have a time between who, one person, or one group leaving and another group coming in order to disinfect the new room that you've created. So I think there's some questions about, we don't want to create another problem, so we want to ask the right questions of the health department about disinfection, ventilation, and so on, because the last thing we want to do is steer people in the direction of doing something. They spend a lot of money, and then we find out that that's not a healthy decision. So before we just plunge right into dividers and so on, I think we need to get some direction from the health officials.
And I think that's what we were saying earlier, so yeah, we concur. All right, any other discussion on this topic before we move on to, should standardized closing times be enforced versus what runs with your use permit? My thought is that it's the use permit versus changing, just trying to standardize everything. You open your business with the expectation you can stay open during the unique operations, and to try to standardize it across the town seems kind of unfair to me. Anybody else? Carrie?
I think with outdoor dining, I think we do have to be a little careful before going on late at night. Their use permit is based on them being inside. So I think the outdoor, I think their use permit, I think we need to be careful to make it real late at night because we need to consider people living nearby. So, not that I want to standardize it, because obviously some restaurants are, don't have people by them, but others do, but it, I think we need kind of a max, you know, 11 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night, and with their, their operating permit. Once COVID, we can get over that hump, then being inside is going to be their normal use permit, but outside, I think we'd be, need to be cognizant of people living around them.
Karen, I don't think I disagree or doubt anybody else does, but Chip, did you hear the question by Carrie? It was kind of an indirect question, but it was basically, are there excessive hours of operations for restaurants, not bars, but restaurants in the area that would necessitate us saying, you're staying open too late, you'd be making too much noise? Are there restrictions on amplification of music or anything else like that?
There are certainly restrictions and amplification of music, council, council. And it's a, it's a, it's a point extremely well taken. We do have some restaurants that are very well-run establishments that unfortunately perpetually impact adjacent downtown residents, people who live downtown. And then they're usually on the side streets. Ocean Avenue, we haven't had that kind of an impact. Of course, it's, it's four lanes with an island median, which makes it wider, allows more opportunity for sound to dissipate. But again, I think it's a very relevant, it's a very relevant point, and that's why I really support this, this, this notion of, of adding someone, that the mayor's suggestion of adding someone to the ad hoc committee or the standing committee, if you will, that lives downtown, or two persons that live downtown so that they can really talk about the potential impacts from that regard.
And that was partially Karen's suggestion, honestly. Jeff, I think you had your first up, and then Karen, your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Tyce. I don't, I'm not willing, you know, I'm more with, I guess I'm more with Carrie's position than Dave's position. I'm not willing to, I'm rather, I'm reticent to simply use the use permit hours from indoor dining to govern what the restaurants are allowed to do outdoors. I think, I think there's some examination here that could be done. I think that restaurants on side streets, and I think, you know, I think restaurants on some of the side streets south of Ocean have impacts on the neighbors that live directly above them. And one thing, you know, and this probably isn't relevant for the COVID months, but I heard Richard Kreitman talk about the character of the village, and I hope that when we get to the point of talking about whether or not we're going to make, whether or not we're going to make these things permanent, or in what fashion we're going to make them permanent or not, you know, one of the nice things about walking through downtown at nine or 10 o'clock at night is that it's pretty quiet. And, and having a lot of outdoor dining downtown is going to really change what I think, what to me is a sort of a fundamental characteristic of what our village is. You know, I like the fact that our village, you know, even though it doesn't really close down at night, it seems to close down at night. So I would like to take a look at especially some of these 11 o'clock times, I think 11 o'clock is probably too late to have people eating on, eating on, on street side, and see if we can rein that in, rein that, rein the outdoor dining part of it, or at least the outdoor dining part of it that is on public property as opposed to the terraces and the, and the whatnot. You know, I know Jan, when Jan was on the council, I know she had some issues with the, the noise from the tent, or she said she had some issues from the noise of the tent at Seventh and Dolores. She had apartments right behind the tent. So there, you know, there's one issue that's been previously raised, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we're in the best position here with the, with using the same set of hours.
Karen?
I think in, in, to be helpful to, to Chief Tomasi's crew, keep it simple, make it standard for now, so that they don't have to have a chart with them driving around saying, oh, they're allowed to be open 11, oop, they're not allowed to be open 11. Let's just keep it simple and, and make it all standard during this COVID time. And then they can go back to their use permit once they go back indoors. But I think it's difficult for the police to drive around and decide who's okay, who's not okay, who they have to stop and admonish to go in. Keep it simple.
Good. Bobby?
Yeah, during this time, during this temporary time, I would, I would go with the standard. If it's going to be 10 o'clock, it's 10 o'clock for everybody, not, not 10 o'clock for some people on Ocean, and 9 o'clock for people on side streets, or none of that. It's, it would just be a standard number during this time, only during this time.
Good, okay. Chip, you got direction on that one? All right, and then I think we've had enough discussion about enforcement and what's appropriate in revocation, permit extensions, or citations. So I think we're good on that one. And then as far as the reference to the planning commission goes, I thought I heard some consensus regarding the extent, the conversion of the ad hoc into a standing committee. I think what I'd like to do is have one more meeting with the ad hoc, which we could have prior to our next council meeting, and then bring it back to council for actual formation of an, of a standing committee, so we make sure we get the right participation with the blessing of council. Chip, what do you think? All right. Any objection to that?
I have a question for you, Dave.
Sure.
You know, one of the things that I just, one of the things that I just mentioned, you know, based on, I riffed on Richard Kreitman's comment about the, about the nature of downtown, one of the things that concerns me a little bit about moving this whole exercise forward, and it's a little bit reflected in Chris Campbell's comment about not really making these decisions, you know, where, when we're in the middle of everything, is that some of the decisions that we make with regards to restaurants may overflow into other areas of the town. So for example, congestion and parking and traffic flow, or bike and pedestrian accessibility, you know, we have ADA issues, and, and I'd like to, I'm not quite sure how to get, sort of get this effort off onto, you know, onto a right foot. I want to make sure, you know, I'd like to see that the, the restaurant effort, you know, this sort of rush to outdoor dining doesn't affect, which I think, you know, there is something there, doesn't affect the character of our village too much and causes to not be able to make progress on other areas such as the ones that I mentioned before. I'm comfortable that, you know, the committee will like talk about enforcement. I'm, I'm comfortable that, you know, the committee will like talk about enforcement and cleanliness and, and how much, how much, how we're going to be paid for the use of public property and all that. But I'm a little bit fuzzy on the aspects that affect sort of the character of the town, such as it is, like the, the quiet at night or something like that. And I'm, I'm concerned about that.
And those would be concerns that would be carried forward to the committee. You'd certainly have a chance to get those opinions before a body that would have full public participation versus just this, you know, you know, come as asked to the meetings, which is what we've been doing. So that's why I think a standing committee would be much more open. I don't see any rush at all to move forward. I just thought we could use this period of time in a more productive manner. So we can have some discussion while we're in the midst of seeing. We started out with some pretty schlocky stuff, to be honest with you. It's come a long way. I think it's improved significantly over the course of time. But we, it's still morphing into something that may or may not be acceptable to the public at all. But why not have some discussion about it while we still have this forum? Otherwise, we're all going to go back in our own private little sectors. This is the only time I've ever seen the restaurant community actually sitting down together. Instead of bickering about a new restaurant that's opening up that might take their market share, I mean, being candid with you. And so I'd, I'd, I'd like to see us use this vehicle that we have right now for some more public dialogue about it and include the public. So that's my concern. I think we're all on the same sheet here. We don't want to get into something that we're going to commit to, but this isn't, we're not committing to anything except having a public forum.
So we can talk about our concerns next, next month?
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
We'll put that in a structure. Karen?
Yes, I'm delighted to hear you talk about expanding that ad hoc committee into more community involvement. I think that that's going to be very valuable. And then what you come up with with regards to outdoor dining could then be taken to the planning commission at a future time. And we are years out of date with our commercial review downtown. We are out, you know, we haven't finished up some of the other reviews. And the information that the ad hoc committee comes forward to could be wrapped or rolled into, you know, an update of that commercial design review at some time, which would take into consideration, like what Councilman Barron said, other things. We have, you know, we have traffic issues, we have circulation issues, we have opportunities to try other things downtown. We might have to have, if, if outdoor dining were something that was expanded and it went up against buildings, we might have to expand sidewalks in places. So I think the ad hoc committee expansion is a positive development tonight. And where it goes, when we get further along and we see what the planning commission can put on their docket as far as updating some of those design reviews, I think is all positive. We don't want to get caught making long-term policy decisions based on short-term emergencies because that way, sometimes you can get stuck with something forever that you really didn't intend to do. So I'm happy that you have suggested expanding that committee and getting more community involvement, more downtown resident involvement, perhaps even a community survey on how we feel about things. I think the residents have been pretty tolerant. I think in some cases, they don't feel included. And part of that is our clunky technology, which makes it harder for them to access meetings and so on. So I think that this is a, a good move on your part. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I would say though, that we haven't tried to be as inclusive as we can with all sectors of the community during my tenure as mayor. I mean, I've really reached out to the residents association more than previously. So we don't have an us against them approach to this community. That's not a good way to government, govern at all. So, but I appreciate the support of the idea. So Chip, do you understand where we're going? All right. So we'll do this by consensus instead of by vote. I think direction's been given to staff. So we can conclude this item. We do have two more items of business though tonight. One is the urgency ordinance regarding sidewalk vending. I can't imagine there's a whole lot of testimony on this, but Chip?
There's a couple of slides, Mr. Mayor, if you want, or if you want to cut to the chase and.
Well, I don't want to bifurcate the process. So in case somebody feels we cut them out. So succinctly.
Okay, Marty, are you presenting this succinctly?
Hey, it's Evan. Yeah, I have this one. My, my presentation should be pretty quick and I'll try to speed it up even more. But thank you, Mayor and council members. So SB 946 went into effect on January 1st, 2019, which established limits on how local authorities may regulate sidewalk vending. The law requires that cities allow sidewalk vending and restrictions may only be imposed when directly related to objective public health and safety or welfare concerns. Local jurisdictions that wish to regulate sidewalk vending are required to first adopt a program with rules and regulations consistent with SB 946. And cities without an adopted program would defer to state law. SB 946 allows cities to, among, to solicit things, require a business license and/or permit, impose restrictions for health, safety and welfare objectives, limit hours of operation and require maintenance sanitation standards. However, cities cannot restrict the overall number of sidewalk vendor permits to operate unless the restriction is directly related to objective health, safety or welfare concerns. In response to SB 946, the city council adopted urgency ordinance 2018-006 in July, or excuse me, January 2019. The urgency ordinance was subsequently amended and extended for 10 months and 15 days at the following February hearing and received an additional one-year extension at the November 5th hearing. And that urgency ordinance is set to expire on December 20th of this year. The urgency ordinance being considered today would amend and restate chapter 12.46. And if adopted, would take effect immediately. The regular ordinance, if introduced by this first reading, would be brought back to council for a second reading at a future hearing and would then take effect 30 days thereafter. The amended ordinance being considered today is substantially similar to the urgency ordinance that is currently in effect. Only minor modifications to the program and organization of the ordinance structure have been proposed. And then for those with current active sidewalk vending permits, those issued under the original urgency ordinance will remain in effect until March 1st, 2021, and then would, would expire thereafter unless renewed in accordance with a new program. So staff's recommendation is to motion to adopt urgency ordinance 2020-008, amending and restating chapter 12.46. Request a reading of the title of ordinance 2020-009, amending and restating chapter 12.46. And motion to wait further reading and introduce ordinance 2020-009, amending and restating chapter 12.46. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Evan, thank you for that very concise presentation. Feel free to present to council at any time in the future. Is there any questions by council members at this time?
I have one there.
I see a hand up, but I can't see any face. So go ahead.
It's Councilman Richards, Mayor.
And Bobby?
This, this could be towards Evan or possibly Brian. If we were, had, had the desire, could the public safety director put a pause or halt any decision on this until it was feasibly safe to have a vending cart? Could he just, could, could our safety director just stop the decision-making right now?
Do that by taking no action.
I'll, I'll take that one. The, the answer is no. If you don't adopt these regulations, then it defaults to the state regulations, which are more encompassing than, than these and, and would, would allow additional vending beyond that, which the ordinance provides.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions before I take it out to the public?
Yes.
I see a hand, but I still don't see any heads.
Karen?
Karen, okay.
Okay. When the original vendors received their licenses, were they, when it came up for those renewals, were they charged an additional fee or were they automatically renewed with no charge?
My understanding is that it was automatically renewed under the urgency ordinance extension. Basically, everyone who had obtained one of the original 13 permits, their permit was extended under the urgency ordinance. So that is one of the differences here. It would not be an automatic renewal. They would have to reapply.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to assume none, even though I still can't see anybody. Is there anybody in the public who should testify on this item tonight?
Mr. Mayor, is it easier if I take the slide showdown?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. You've done such a good job before. I didn't want to ruin your buzz.
Oh, no, no problem. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay. I don't hear anybody in the public. Britt, what do you think?
I would like to ask one question again.
Okay, go ahead. What's your name?
This is Shane Alloaime. I want to know why we don't have, you know, ambulance service in Carmel by the Sea. Why, why does it have to come from Monterey?
That's not relevant to this topic, sir. This is about sidewalk dining. That would have been a good question during public comment. But no, this, that's not on topic right at the moment. So if you have a comment about the urgency ordinance regarding sidewalk dining, sidewalk vending.
If sidewalk dining contributes to COVID, if sidewalk dining contributes to COVID, why don't we have an ambulance that can take people that have been infected?
All right. Well, is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak? I'll answer that question when we get back. Okay, Britt, I'm going to say there's nobody else wishing to speak.
Doesn't appear so.
Unless I'm wrong, we have a dedicated ambulance in Carmel unlike any other city anywhere else. We have a dedicated ambulance with an incredible response time surpassed by any other jurisdiction in the county, perhaps even in the state. So that, that's the answer to that question very succinctly. Chip, did you want to extend?
That comes from Monterey, not Carmel.
This is not a debate, sir. This is an opportunity. We have a Carmel ambulance station and a downtown station. So.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I mean, right, right up the street from Mr. Shaheen's restaurant on, on, on Sixth Avenue between Mission and Dolores and, I'm sorry, between Mission and San Carlos is the Carmel by the Sea Fire Station, which has a permanent ambulance staff, which serves, serves our community. It's, it's a $1.7 million expense to the city. We own our own equipment. It's, it's, it's accessorized as well by Monterey Fire's paramedics. So and EMTs, all firefighters are EMTs. So I'm not, I'm not sure where the misinformation is coming from, but I can, I'll follow up Mr. Shaheen individually, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be good. All right. Is there any other questions or comments by the council? Could we have a motion to move the item as recommended by staff? If somebody'd like to read their way through this, we could then move.
I'm sorry, Dave. I, I do have some comments. I wasn't, I didn't realize that we were up for council comments.
Okay, Jeff?
No, this was an issue at the last city council meeting about budgeting.
Britt, thank you.
I've, yeah, I've, I'll keep my comments. Thank you. I'll keep my comments pretty short. You know, I've objected to the city's way of addressing 946 every time it's come up and I'm, I'm going to keep my track record intact and object again. I see, I see Carrie making a face. Thank you, Carrie. I love you too. SB, SB 946 requires jurisdictions to enact programs to regulate sidewalk vending. But in fact, the, the sidewalk vending program that Carmel has enacted has all but outlawed sidewalk vending. And the best example of this is last year when, when the, when the permits came up for renewal, we automatically renewed every single, every single one of the 13 permits, even though I believe only one of the permit holders actually exercised the permit. And now I think according to the law that we're getting ready, that the council's getting ready presumably to enact tonight, we're going to allow these permit holders to continually renew their permits. And so no one else from outside of these 13 permit holders is ever going to have the opportunity to enact, ever going to have the opportunity to embark on their own, their own sidewalk vending journey in Carmel. A couple of, a couple of things that I would say, one, you know, two years ago, when we talked about all the restrictions, we, we talked about sidewalk widths and ADA accessibility and all that. And yet I'm pretty sure that we have allowed some of the restaurants to put seating on these narrow sidewalks, you know, even though those sidewalks aren't wide enough for sidewalk vendors and they also affect ADA. So it, it seemed like we are using the same standard differently in, in two cases. And, and the other thing I was going to say, well, the other thing I was going to say escapes me at this late hour. So I'll just, you know, I'll register my objections and I, I will be voting no. And thank you.
Understand your consistency, Jeff. You've always been that way. Well done. Is there anybody else wishing to comment? All right. Perhaps we could go ahead then and make a motion with somebody like to read the actual urgency, the actual statement in for the recommendation or the motion.
Well, your first act, yeah, your first act, Mayor, excuse me, is the motion to adopt the urgency ordinance. So somebody should make that motion.
So moved?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? Britt, could we get a roll call on that action?
Councilmember Barron?
No.
Berlito?
Yes.
Tyce?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yeah.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
He passes with four yes votes with Councilmember Barron voting no.
And then the second piece of this action is?
To, to request a reading of the title, which I can do.
That'd be good.
Okay, this is ordinance number 2020-009, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Carmel by the Sea, amending and restating chapter 12.46, sidewalk vending program of the Carmel by the Sea municipal code.
Motion to that effect, please.
The motion, Mayor, would be the third item on the recommendation would be to wait further reading and introduce the ordinance.
Exactly.
So moved?
Second.
A motion is second. Britt, roll call, please. Sharon?
Next, next slide, Britt, please. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The required action this evening is to hold a public hearing as required by state law as part of the process to renew the Carmel Hospitality Improvement District, also known as the CHID. Specifically tonight, council will receive testimony on the renewal of the CHID as well as the levying of the proposed assessment. Council will hold a protest hearing and determine the results, meaning determining whether the city has received written protests by the business owners who would pay 50% or more of the proposed assessment to be levied. If, in determining that no majority protest exists, council may adopt a resolution to renew the CHID and levy the assessment as well as adopt a resolution to authorize the city administrator to execute agreement with Visit Carmel to serve as the Owners Association for the CHID. And just in terms of background, the current Carmel Hospitality Improvement District was formed through a similar process in accordance with the State and Highways Code of the California. And the current assessment is 1% of gross short-term room rental revenue. That's levied on all the lodging establishments within the city's boundary. The assessment funds marketing and other programs for the benefit of the hotel owners and that benefit is to increase overnight room sales. The CHID does expire on February of 2021 and thus, in accordance with state law, hospitality improvement district may be renewed, going through a very similar process as the formation. Upon the receipt of the mandatory number of petitions required to renew the CHID, council did adopt a resolution of intent in October of 2020 to start the process. The proposed management district plan that accompanied the petition and the resolution that council adopted in October does propose to increase the assessment from 1% to 2%. It's still be levied on the lodging establishments within the city. establishments within the city. It would still be used for marketing and other programs to increase overnight room sales. The estimated annual budget based on this 2% assessment would be about $800,000 annually, and the new term would be 10 years, which is, uh, allowed by state laws. That new term would become effective on March 1st of 2021. Next slide, please. Uh, staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution to renew the CHID as proposed in the management district plan and levy the assessments. However, council does have the authority to adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify the proposed assessment or the type of improvements, maintenance, and activities to be funded with the revenue from the assessment. Uh, once council has made the determination regarding the renewal and the levying of the assessment, staff also recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute agreement with Visit Carmel. Visit Carmel would continue to serve as the Owners Association for the CHID, and Owners Association is a nonprofit entity that's under contract with the city and tasked with the implementation of the activities specified in the management district plan, again, in accordance with state law. And so that does conclude my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, councilman.
Thank you very much for that succinct presentation. Much appreciated in keeping with the previous one. Um, are there any questions at this moment? I don't see any. All right, Sharon, thank you. We'll bring it back to council for deliberation and direction. Council members, your preference? Chip?
We should take public comment first, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I forgot about public participation. How dare I? Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item?
So Mayor, this is Brian. You should, um, formally open, open the public hearing. You recall, the public hearing was already, uh, opened and continued to this date, so you're basically reopening the public hearing tonight.
All right, we'll consider that done then. I'm reopening the public hearing tonight. Is there anybody wishing to testify again?
Hi, this is Pam Shepherd.
Hi, Pam, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Um, so I own the Horizon Inn in Oceanview Lodge along with my husband. Uh, my family's had it for the last 40 years. So I just want to go on the record of saying I'm fully in support of the HID renewal, um, considering that we are going to really need these additional funds, uh, to respond to what, you know, what's been happening this past year. And, uh, we need to stay competitive. Our competitor set has a much larger budget than we do, so these funds are going to be critical. Um, I'm also grateful to the city council for allocating funds in the, uh, for, to support our marketing efforts. Um, I think it's really important that the city, uh, has a seat at our table. Um, we're, I, I don't think I'm alone when I say that, uh, we really appreciate Chip's role on our board and, uh, recognize that, that the interdependence that exists between our city, uh, the businesses and the residents. And, um, I just think that this group has done great things and will can, and we're going to need to do great things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. Anybody else tonight?
Hi, yes, it's Amy Herzog.
Hey, Amy, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. On behalf of the vast majority of hotels who have ordered, already formally expressed our support of this renewal and as well on, as, on behalf of the Visit Carmel Board, thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration over these three meetings and addressing this topic. Um, we've discussed many different details, specific benefits of the HID, and you've heard from several other hoteliers at previous meetings. But just on a broad level, um, I just wanted to point out that what this assessment district renewal does is it ensures a more stable and indeed a self-sustaining funding source. And as we're entering what is predicted to be some really dark months, the hotels are truly relying on having those funds. Um, the emotion that you heard from the restaurants tonight, uh, mirrors that of the hoteliers in our community as well. Um, and we, um, not only will those funds be crucial as we work toward recovery of tourism, um, but that, that industry is going to become even more intensely competitive than ever. Um, a report today by Visit California indicates that we may not be back to where we were in terms of, um, tr- travel and tourism in the state until 2024. So we do indeed potentially have a long road ahead of us. But even beyond that shorter-term recovery, which will hopefully, hopefully will be behind us one day, the renewal provides Visit Carmel with the confidence to also look to the long term and be even more strategic and more creative and more sophisticated in our marketing program so that we continue to be successful. So I just wanted to thank you again for your work on this and your, your cooperation with, uh, helping us to, um, market the destination in a responsible and, um, successful way. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anybody else?
Rich Pepe?
Go ahead, Rich.
Oh, hi. Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to chime in also, and I, when I echo, uh, Pam's, uh, comments about that, this has been a great collaboration between the city, the hotels, and now even the restaurants, um, with this assessment district. But I just want to remind, uh, everybody on council and at the city level and all the residents involved also that our meetings are always open to the public. And I want to give a lot of credit to, uh, to Amy Herzog, our director, and the agencies for being very nimble and being careful what we say during this pandemic time, that we have not over, overly marketed the city. Um, and right now, our new tagline, tagline is dream now, explore later. So, uh, the funds that we're talking about using for, to really future marketing, um, we're being very cautious right now as to, uh, who we might want to, uh, even attract even one visitor here at this moment. So I just want to remind everybody that we are conscious of that. And a lot of time and effort is, is devoted to, uh, being responsible, like Amy also said. So thank you very much, and I hope that you'll give us a, a thumbs up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Doesn't look like it. I just kind of want to just delay a little, just in case.
All right, hearing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and then move on. We're direction from council. There are two actions before us, two motions needed for adoption. Do we have any questions or comments or possible motions? Bobby?
Comment, yeah. Just because I'm pretty familiar with this organization, and I, I can't tell you how much respect I have for this board of directors and with the leadership of their director, Amy Herzog. I think it's one of the finest groups that came together over the past, uh, I would say seven to eight years, that really put into collaboration the CVB, the RID, the HID, the chamber. They've done a fantastic job, and I just want to, I just want to share my, um, my personal accolades for them with you, the public, and my, uh, fellow council members that maybe not quite be as intimately familiar with them as I am. But they, they do a fantastic job, and they've done a fantastic job over the past few years, and, uh, I'm in full support of whatever they need.
I'd enthusiastically support that emotion. Jeff?
Yeah, I would just like to echo Councilmember Richard's comments, um, all the work that Amy does, and I know, I know Jenny must be listening somewhere, the professionalism with which they conduct themselves. Um, it is, it is a good organization. Um, thank you, Pam, and Amy, and Rich for coming to speak tonight. And I know we've had lots of hoteliers come to speak over the course of the past few months. Um, thank you for showing up and, and, and speaking, and, and I will happily support this.
Any other comments? Karen?
Yes, um, I don't know as much about this since I'm a new councilperson, but I do have respect for, uh, Visit Carmel for putting out the right tone of messages during this very challenging time. Uh, and I appreciate that very much, and I think most of the residents do too, uh, to visit later, take a look now, visit later. Um, and I think they've been very helpful with some of the printed materials in the village, and, uh, I, I do appreciate that. I also want to say that if the council decides at some point in the future to try to raise the TOT for other, uh, purposes, uh, that they, uh, this group will remember that, uh, that we might want to do that sometime in the future and be supportive of that when that time comes. Thank you.
Karen, I agree with you regarding messaging in a difficult time. You guys have done an excellent job. Amy of being able to walk that difficult line between, don't come here now, but we'd like you to come in the future. And it's really been very impressive how you've managed that. And I think the community appreciates it both from the hospital or the hospitality side, but also the resident side. So thank you. All right, moving on with the business before us. Could we have a motion to adopt resolution 20 dash 20 oh eight seven, declaring results of majority protest proceedings and renewing the Carmel Hospitality Improvement District for a term of March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2031?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Britt, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tyce? Oh, sorry. Uh, Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Okay, it passes with four yes votes with Councilmember Tyce recused.
And then recognizing her still recusal is going on, adopt resolution 20 dash 20 dash oh eight eight, authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with Visit Carmel to service the Carmel Hospitality Improvement District Owners Association for a term of March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2031. Motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Britt, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Uh, Forlito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Hey, it passes with four yes votes with Councilmember Tyce recused.
Thank you all. Carrie, if you'd like to rejoin us to decide if there's any future agenda items, that'd be fine. If not, I think we can consider your participation very effective tonight. Is there anybody else wishing to add an item for the next agenda?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to, um, bring up again the subject of the temporary road closure on scenic. I'm hoping that we'll have a brief discussion about that in January, as I mentioned two months ago.
I did, I did look at the advanced agenda for agenda review, which I think we're doing tomorrow, and I believe that's an item that we're going to place on the agenda. So you're already covered, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, no worries. All right, guys. Thanks for all the hard work. I appreciate, especially appreciate you all coming back for another meeting after we could have probably dealt with this a week ago, but unfortunately, due to technical difficulties, we had to take more time, but I really appreciate it. And very tough decisions tonight. I know we all suffered with them and I was not happy with having to do it, but we, sometimes you have to do the right thing even though it feels wrong. So thank you much. Take care, guys. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Mayor. See you in the near.
Absolutely. Have a great, have a great holiday, by the way. My, my, my apologies for not being more excited about the holiday.
Yeah, me too.